Good evening and welcome to the Green Bay School Board Candidate Forum hosted by the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. My name is Karen Schley. On behalf of the League, I would like to thank the candidates who are participating this evening. They are Paul Boucher, Jason Johnson, incumbent Laura Latanen-Warren, James Laurley, and Brian Mills. One candidate, Darren Kane, has declined because of a previous commitment. These six candidates are running for three open seats on the school board. Students attending the Boys and Girls Club recently submitted questions they would like the candidates to answer. This is very encouraging that these students are taking an interest in upcoming elections as they will be our next generation of voters. Some of them are even tuning in to follow the forum. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit two years ago, the League of Women Voters moved to virtual forums in order to keep the public safe and to still allow the voters to be informed about the important issues and to meet the candidates for upcoming elections. The spring general election is Tuesday, April 5th. Because of the pandemic, absentee voting or vote by mail has become very popular. Absentee ballots will be sent out on March 15th, and early in-person voting starts on March 22nd. Because of the different devices that individuals are using to join us, some windows or squares may be larger. This is not intended to favor any one candidate. Members in the audience may improve their viewing experience by selecting "View Active Cameras" at the top of their screen. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Next, the questions will rotate between the candidates with each being given a 1-minute, 30-second opportunity to answer the question given. In closing, each candidate will have two minutes to make final remarks. There is, there will be no rebuttal. The forum will last for 90 minutes. Questions have been gathered ahead of time and sorted by League members for duplication. Questions must be questions that all candidates can address, and they need to be appropriate and pertaining to the issues. Viewers can still submit questions during the forum. The email is l w v g g b forums 20 at gmail dot com. This address will appear on the screen during the forum. The Green Bay School Board Candidate Forum will be on our Facebook page as well as on our website. The League of Women Voters of the United States recommends that all League forums fall within FCC's regulation and will only allow audio/video to be broadcast in its entirety except by the media reporting on the event. Before we start, I would like to thank the many League members who helped to make this forum possible. With a very special thank you to Steve Herro, a League member who stepped up to guide us in the technology needed. The League moderator for this forum is Jean Marsh. Jean is a very active League member. She is on the League of Women Voters Board of Directors and is the past president of the Green Bay School Board. Jean is currently the chairperson for the League of Women Voters Healthcare Committee. Please enjoy this forum and remember it is very important to vote.
Thank you, Karen, and welcome to our candidates, Paul Boucher, Jason Johnson, Laura Latanen-Warren, James Laurley, and Brian Mills. And welcome to our virtual audience watching from the safety of your home. Thank you for taking time to attend this important forum and become informed about this election. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens and government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. As Karen stated, questions have been submitted in advance, and we also welcome questions from our audience during this program. The timekeeper for the forum is a League member Jill Ferminick. With this being a virtual forum, the candidate who begins selected a number closest to a predetermined number, and I will alternate each subsequent question between candidates so that each candidate has the opportunity to respond first. We will begin with a two-minute opening statement, and I will call on Paul Boucher. Please offer your opening statement. Paul?
Okay, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting up this forum. I was born in Green Bay. I've lived here most of my life. I went to East High School. I also went to Catholic schools before that. I got my degree in sociology from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, which is one of the top schools in the country for the study of sociology. I lived in Washington DC for three years. I worked at Georgetown University and Georgetown University Law Center. So I'm familiar with how the schools are run. I've been studying the society we live in. I've had a variety of different jobs from everything from real estate to factory work to farm work, to working in libraries. The list goes on. But I'm trying to make a difference in the community. I see there's a lot of people who have problems, and particularly in the schools, and I have solutions. So I'm looking forward to discussing the solutions and hopefully making a difference.
Thank you. Jason Johnson, if you would please offer your opening statement?
Yes, my name is Jason Johnson. I'm running for the Green Bay School Board because I'm concerned about the quality of education that our children are receiving. I live in Green Bay with my wife and two children. My two kids go to school in the Green Bay area public school systems. As a parent and a member of the community, I've watched my neighbors and friends pull their kids out of the Green Bay area public school system, and it concerns me because our schools are one of the measures that you can measure a community by. Over the last 22 years, I've worked as an engineer in Green Bay. I've worked also throughout the United States. I have a degree in construction engineering from North Dakota State University. As an engineer, I've worked throughout the United States investigating numerous building failures, which kind of include, you know, just the structures, beams, columns, floors, foundations, building envelopes, which is like roofs, walls, windows, doors, those types of things. So in doing so, I provided guidance to facility managers. And I've also given or evaluated, you know, buildings in general. I've given facility managers and building owners guidance for general maintenance and restoration, expansion of structures and buildings. And then working throughout the United States, it's allowed me to work with people having a diverse ethnic and social and economic backgrounds, you know, from all over the world. I believe my background and knowledge and experience would be valuable to the school district and taxpayers in the community in the coming years, you know, with regard to the facility-wide evaluation of all the district buildings that you're going to have. So that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. Laura Latanen-Warren, would you please offer your two-minute opening statement?
Sure. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. This is so important to maintain our democracy, to have these forums, and I really appreciate that. I'm running for the school board for a number of reasons. I am a mom. I have a, my dog is not well. I'm a product of the public school system and a proud graduate of UW Madison. I have a strong connection to two communities in that I'm a resident of Green Bay and I'm also a member of the United Nation. I've lived in Green Bay with my husband for the last 12 years. I have two kids who go to elementary school in Green Bay. And my educational background has, I'm a UW graduate, master's degree from UW Oshkosh, and I'll be graduating with my educational leadership PhD in May, studying leadership. I also professionally started as a blackjack dealer in college, and I've worked in capacity for HR for a number of years with the United Nation. Most recently, I've worked with the tribal chairman's office and as a policy advisor. And currently, I'm in education administration. My involvement with the district has been since my oldest child was in 4K with the American Indian Education Parent Committee, the Superintendent Parent Committee, and our school's PTO. I had the opportunity to serve as an appointment for the last year, and it has been a challenge but also very rewarding, and I know education is the cornerstone to our community. And so I'm honored to be here, honored to serve, and I'm going to try to get my dog to be very quiet. So I apologize, but thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you. James Laurley, if you'd please offer your two-minute opening statement?
Good evening. I too want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's event. That, as Lauren and others said, these are very important events, and they are the foundation of our democratic process. And honestly, there are too few of them. And I'm reluctant to say, but I wish we would have had a primary because I would like more people invested in our community and willing to run for public office to support our local community. I started a recent social media post by stating that our children deserve quality, engaged teachers to educate and inspire them. And I 100% believe that our teachers change their lives. I also believe that our teachers need our support, their administration, Board of Education, and their community. I need to expand on that, and I also think that our kids need our adults, their adults, to be positive role models. So the most important life lesson I want my kids to take away from me is, and this is quoting Theodore Roosevelt, "It's not the critic that counts." Right? I applaud my fellow candidates who have chosen, and it's a very difficult choice to run for public office and sacrifice their personal time, their energy, and most likely some money to serve their community and the district. So we all come from different backgrounds, and we all bring something unique to the board. Personally, I have been in the private sector for 20 years. I direct very large investment programs for organizations, and the product and development activities, I'm held accountable for them. And accounting for these large budgets to an organization and driving that strategic vision for that organization, it translates onto the board. Like Jason, that experience is really important to round out a board that also needs school administration expertise, and Lauren and Brian have a load of that. So my youngest attends school in the district, and I'm running for him. Our public schools face issues that need our immediate and our continued attention. And how successful we are at addressing those issues will impact the future and so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, James. Brian Mills, if you'd please offer your two-minute opening statement?
Thank you. Laura, I'm impressed with the dog barking. I keep looking up to make sure cats don't come down, so hopefully that works out well. So I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight and as well as the other candidates for giving your time to come and hear us, as well as the community members who are viewing this for taking their time out to find out more about the candidates running for the school board. My name is Brian Mills. I'm proud to be running for the Green Bay Area Public School Board. I spent my entire career working to improve public education and to ensure that all students have access to great public schools. I'm a middle school special education teacher in a neighboring district, and I help students make positive choices in school and in their community, and I am completing my sixth year there. Prior to this, I was a special education teacher at Washington Middle School, working for 13 years with students that receive special education services in a variety of areas. But I primarily worked with students to improve their behavior and their emotional skills to make positive choices. I also officiate football and basketball throughout Brown County. Paul, I saw you at the game today. I had to ignore you for a little bit because I was doing a sixth-grade middle school game at Washington. But thanks for coming out and seeing it. I also coordinate our football officials for the Green Bay Officials Association for nonvarsity games for schools in the metro area, including all of the Green Bay schools. If you've attended a basketball game at any of the middle schools, you've probably have seen me there. I hope that you agreed with the calls. Paul, you can let me know after the forum which of the calls we made. I also serve in our districts as our districts gifted and talented coordinator for the CISA Gifted and Talented Consortium, and we work to provide opportunities for all students, and we collaborate with educators throughout the region on what's working in education and what we need to improve on. In my district, I'm also our nonviolent crisis intervention trainer, where I train other staff members on how to respond when students assist, and we work on social emotional learning as well and focus on de-escalation techniques. I'm a former member of the initial cohort of the New York Times Learning Network Teaching Project, one of 60 educators that was selected from throughout the country. This collaboration allows me to identify what's working in education and also to work with other educators throughout the country. There's a lot of challenges that Green Bay faces as an urban district. Their neighboring districts may not recognize. Proud resident of Green Bay, and I'll talk more after because I believe I just heard my time warning, so. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question, we will start with you, Jason. And the question is, what are your top priorities for the Green Bay Public School District, and what will be your first item of business?
Well, my, one of my top priorities is to try to get a handle on some of the behaviors that are occurring in our classrooms. I've got a lot of friends that are teachers and a wife that's a teacher, and they all are saying the same thing, is that they're having a lot of problems with with behaviors in the classroom, and they're having problems with having administrators back them up. So that would be one of my first priorities. And then the second one is, I'd like to to really help with what's going on as far as the maintenance, the general maintenance of our buildings. As an engineer and a person that's worked in some of those buildings and been in the buildings, I can see a lot of problems with general maintenance that hasn't been done and should be done. It's going to be costing our taxpayers a lot of money to do that. So I really want to create a more positive environment in our, in our schools is the very first thing, and try to get a handle on some of the behaviors, and then also look at some of these kids that are way behind in our classes. Because there's, there's a lot of kids that that didn't participate in our virtual learning, and now they're way behind. So those are the things.
Thank you. Laura, if you'd please offer your answer to that question?
Could you repeat it for me one more time, please?
Yes. What are your top priorities for the Green Bay Public School District, and what will be your first item of business, if you'd like?
My top priorities for the Green Bay School District, I think, one is we have to recruit and retrain, retain quality teachers. We have to keep the great teachers we have. We need to have a customer service type approach to our families in the district. I think I try to do that for the last year. I've been on the board in trying to respond to every email I've received, every Facebook message. I'll put the caveat in is I haven't responded or maybe taken the time to respond to ones where they were less than kind in the emails, but for the most part, if anybody wrote anything civil, I tried to get back the best I could to engage that way. But I think that families need to be heard, people need to be talked to, but we have to have a talented team of professionals that are engaged, that are satisfied working in the district. And that's a challenge, you know, for me, working with the United Nation and working in the casino vision, you know, that's a for-profit entity, so you can reward performance with financial things. It's a lot more difficult in the public school, so we have to be creative, and we have to focus on children and change the narrative about coming from behind. But this is where we're at. It's a pandemic. Here's where we are. Let's move forward and continue to do good things for the district, focus on families, teachers, and the kids.
Thank you. James Laurley, if you'd please respond to the question?
Sure. Laura and I are very aligned on my number one objective. Without teachers, without engaged teachers, our school systems ultimately fail in their objective in teaching our kids and preparing them for our future. That is a budget discussion, but it's also an innovation discussion, right? I will communicate that my second objective is for us to not have just invested significantly in a new IT infrastructure and a virtual learning infrastructure for it to not return on investment, right? So approaches to the teacher problem, well, it includes pay and making sure that we are attracting talent, but we also have to do that within a budget, and that requires us to think creatively about how we leverage technology to expand the scope of their responsibilities and duties without their hours and their administrative burdens.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please respond to the question?
I agree with making sure that we need to have safe schools for our students and for our staff to work in. One of the approaches that I've stressed before is the community school model, and that hits on a lot of these key issues that other candidates have mentioned. We need to make sure also that we're retaining all of our staff, not only our educators, but also our support staff and also even, not even, but as well as facility staff that we continue to offer programs that will allow them to progress as they work in the schools. The other thing is, school funding is going to be an issue, and I think we need to do our best to continue to recruit other students to our district. Green Bay offers an amazing amount of programs, and we we outshine a lot of the neighboring districts that we need to focus on that to start getting some of the people that are leaving due to open enrollment back into the school, which obviously helps the funding. So those are my key issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond to the question?
Well, I think we have to inspire the students. If you can inspire them, they will be more in line to obey the rules. If they feel that their, their goals are in line with what the administration and what the teachers are trying to do. I think too often that there's a disconnect between what the teachers are doing and what they believe in. And then as far as financing, I would, I would try to get some creative financing. Like if we're going to build a new school or something, let's say we want to build a new high school. Usually you just buy the land and when, and and the property around the land sells for a greater value, and the school doesn't benefit from that. So if the school was going to build a high school and they bought like two square miles of land and built a subdivision, they could make money from the real estate, and then that money would help finance the school. It's similar to the movie founders. If you see what Ray Kroc did with McDonald's, you can make money from side issues that will fund the schools, and then other issues of legalizing marijuana. I know the schools don't deal with that directly, but there's so many colleges in the country that use marijuana. We might as well be taxing it and using the money for the schools.
Thank you. For our second question, we will start with Laura Latanen-Warren. And the question is, what is the kind of relationship that the school board should have with its community, its parents and families, teachers and staff?
I think the relationship needs to be, school board needs to be accessible. The school board needs to be visible. It's going to be, or it's been nice to be able to get out to the schools now with the pandemics, you know, slowly going behind us. I think it needs, the school board needs to be accessible, needs to be approachable. The role is to help guide the district towards the vision that has established the mission to work strategically and making sure that the policies align with where we want to go for public education, to make sure that our schools are welcoming for all families and that everybody feels comfortable. We have to, we can say that people are welcome, but we have to make people feel welcome. We need to go to them sometimes in their places, their neighborhoods, and get them to come and be a part of the, the school community. And I think that the school board needs to be instrumental in that and being a part of the community and getting people to come in and and working to have some more diversity on our school board as well as within the administration and teachers is, is something that I think we can work towards to make families all feel welcome.
Thank you. James Laurley, if you'd please take the question?
The question, as it was stated, my answer to that is, this is representative government, right? We are not hired to execute the activities inside the public school system. We are being elected by our community to represent them in that relationship with the administration, right? So we are the connection. So just as you would reach out to your state representative and you expect them to work on your behalf and create that connection and give you a voice in those meetings with the, the school district, that is how I see the relationship, that the techniques and the responsiveness of responding to emails and how we communicate, it has to be as transparent and open and accessible as possible.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please respond to the question?
Jean, could you repeat the question for me, please?
Yes. What kind of relationship does school board have with its community, its parents and family, and teachers and staff?
I agree with the community part with what James had said of being a representative democracy, or I'm sorry, representative government, making sure that we're hearing from the constituents and our community members, including our students, our staff, the people that are part of that. As a school board member, we also need to promote the school district. As a board member, I want to be there to champion the school district and champion what the great things are that are taking place. We also need to do outreach with communities that we haven't necessarily reached out to and communities I may not be familiar with or have, have built connections with as well. We also need to collaborate with the community members and stakeholders, and we need to make sure that we are just promoting, promoting, promoting as much as possible. The, the other thing that we need to make sure we're working with is that all the students are being heard as well with it, and when we're, I'm sorry, all of the stakeholders are being heard as well with it. Green Bay has a great history of communicating well with employees, with educators, support staff, and we need to make sure that we're promoting those. We're working well and collaborating with them. We also need to make sure that we're setting up policies that allow the schools to perform well and that we're supporting them.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please take the question?
Well, we have our school board meetings there up in the sky in this building where the administration lives and works. I would like to bring the, the school board meetings to the, to the schools. I would put them in the gymnasiums. And instead of being on low tables for the school board members, have them at bar height tables so that, that they can be more on level with what people are doing, because people don't want to go to the, to the one office building and, and, and be on the, the school board's ground. They want to be where the kids are, and it'll be easier for people to express themselves. And we need to get the communities into the schools and the school board into the schools so that people can communicate better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond to the question?
Yes, I, I think the school board needs to really listen to its constituents, which include the parents of the students, the students, the administration and the teachers, and especially the teachers. Because like what was, what was discussed earlier, we're having a real hard time retaining our teachers, and we're having a hard time retaining students too. In my community or my neighborhood, the Green Bay area public school has lost several of the, the students because they didn't like what was going on with the schools, and when they approached the school board or they've, they've done some stuff, does outreach, they just kind of got ignored. And so if I'm elected, I would listen to them and try to actually bring some resolution to what their concerns are instead of listening to them and then just kind of turning your back. That's it.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with James Laurley. And the question is, what is your plan to offer the same sports to all regardless of gender? And why is there a girls volleyball team and not a boys volleyball team? This is a question that was posed by our students.
I don't really have a good answer as to why there is a girls volleyball team and not a boys volleyball team, to be brutally honest with you. The first portion of that question is, in my life, in my experience, I have friends who have had children go through the process of transitioning, and it is incredibly difficult. And any support that we can give those individuals and the inclusion of that person in the activities that we all deem normal saves lives. If there are those positive influences in their lives, statistically, have a much better chance. I have two experiences. One, positively supported. The other one is not being included, and it is at risk. So my position on it is, I would advocate for inclusion and in all possible ways in sports.
Thank you. Brian, would you please take the question?
Yes. The reason that there, it's my understanding, the reason that there may be girls volleyball and not boys volleyball, some of it has to go with federal law of the number of sports offered for each team and falls into it, I believe. Other school districts have boys volleyball, and they have other programs. Other school districts have boys volleyball and they have other programs there. One of the things that we need to do is we need to increase participation by looking at transportation issues and figuring out a plan that the district can set up to help students get to various sites. My my daughters are looking at going out for swimming and we live on the far east side and swim practices at Southwest and with a unified team and finding transportation to get kids to different areas is going to be tricky. And I think that's one one thing that cuts down on the participation after collectivities and sports is just making sure the transportation is there. We need to make sure that we have students that are interested and we can field winning teams or competitive teams with it as well. If we could form a Green Bay United Boys Volleyball Team and get enough numbers on there, I'd say, yes, we need to look into it and see how it works. The other part of it's funding and just making sure that we have support there for all schools to be able to participate in the sports. Sports are expensive, athletics are expensive, and and we have some fantastic facilities in the district and we have some facilities that need to be upgraded. And we need to look at equity as far as access and the facilities that we have, in particular Prebles, Prebles Field is in need of some upkeep. I know, listening to a community session, there's concern there about not being able to host soccer tournaments, I'm sorry, regional soccer matches and track because of the upkeep of the track, they won't be able to host any home meets this year. So we need to make sure that we're funding those spots as well.
All right. Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond to the question.
Well, I'd like to see him double the the sports programs. As far as what students can do, if if they want to have volleyball, a boys volleyball, they can develop an intermural program. And they don't have to wait for the for the school system to get on board. They can work with the park system. They can just work as a coalition of friends. And once the program, once people start getting interested, it'll it'll get the ball rolling. But I think sports should be for everybody right now. And when you talk to people about sports program in schools, they always say, you mean the high schools. But no, I mean grade school levels, developing programs. And then when you get to high school, it shouldn't, like basketball shouldn't just be for the best basketball players. It should be for everybody. So we really need to develop the sports program in in so many different ways. And if we can invest in in field houses and better weight rooms, better fitness centers and getting like a global heads, the community can go to their sports center in schools. So we get teachers and community involved in a sports center. It could help to get people more involved in sports.
Thank you. Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond to the question.
Can you repeat the question? I just don't want to get off topic here.
Yes. What is your plan to offer the same sports to all regardless of gender? And why is there a girls volleyball team and not a boys?
Well, the the reason there's not a, there there is a girls volleyball team and not a boys, it goes back to like Brian said, it's it's a federal law and they they have to, they're going to have to look at 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 what that law says and how you would do it. As far as sports, sports is extremely important in in our schools. It develops, you know, working as a team. And the other thing it does is it helps physically develop kids. And we need to be pushing these sports and kids going out to sports. One of the things I see right now as a parent with two kids in in sports in the in the schools is it's the same kids that are going out over and over and over again for the sports. And we really need to look at some of our our people that you would consider lower learners or or at risk students and try to get those students into sports and also their parents involved with it. And and there again, you're going to have to look at how do you get the kids to the schools because it's very difficult for some of these parents to be able to to transport their kids and it does cost. And so we really need to look at that because every time my kids go out, there's a, there's a you know, coming up and we need to have a check for fifty dollars or seventy five dollars and then and and always adding money. So we really need to look at that, but there you go.
Thank you. Laura, if you please respond to the question.
Sure, I'm I'm thankful that I wasn't the first person on the athletic sports related question because that has never been my forte. That being said, just like what Jason said, I recognize the value and the importance of it in the school community and the greater community. I agree with everything that was said about being inclusive, about having the opportunity for for all the students in our district to be able to find their niche, to find their their people, their community that they're comfortable with and to be able to develop physical health, mental health in that team bill building and all of that that goes with athletics. And so I really appreciate appreciate the question. I don't have anything more to add to that than than what was said or any different viewpoint. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're now at our fourth question and we'll start with you, Brian. Lately, much attention has been given to a search carried out in a Wisconsin school district to find vaping equipment. Do you feel this action was justified? And if not, how do you feel this matter should have been handled?
Um, no, I don't feel the search is justified and I don't believe it was legal. And the court's going to obviously go through with that. As a special education teacher, I've worked with students in behavior situations frequently. One of the key aspects to it is making sure that you have connections with students throughout the whole building. It's amazing what you will find out from students when you need to and that they'll share with you to make sure that they have a safe learning environment, a safe school, because a majority of students want to avoid this as well. Searching students should be done with a police officer and should have parents involvement, especially if it's if it's something. I don't want to say is relatively minor as a vape pen, but that that situation will be it it'll come up again. And by making sure that we have enough staff that have good communication and good connections with students, they usually do a pretty good job of letting you know when something wrong is going on in the building as much as possible. So I disagree completely with the decision by the superintendent and I believe Searing. And I believe we would have board policies that would direct us on that policy.
Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond to the question.
Um, what they did was basically crazy. Students need to have agency. They need to be able to make a decision if they want to do whatever they're asked to do. They want, if they're told to go to the principal's office, they should have another option. If there if if the teachers want to know if they have vape pens, you know, of course, they want to know, but it's sometimes there's there's limits to what you can do. And if the students are on board with your program, they'll obey your rules. And if they don't believe in your program, they're not going to obey your rules. And that's basically what's happening is the students don't believe in the system. The school should be is set up so that the students will have a better life, not so that the teachers can rule over them. So if we if we get on board with what the students want and identify their goals, incidents like this, we shouldn't happen at all.
Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond.
Yeah, there was some poor decisions made there by that superintendent and the people that were involved. It should never have gotten that far. However, that kind of comes back to making sure that you know, the students, the students are understand what the rules are and then, you know, who's in charge and comes down to respect, you know, if their students respect the teachers and the administration. And I think there was a lack of respect from everybody, the lack of respect from the students to the teachers and the administration and a lack of a respect from the administration to the teachers. You know, this kind of comes down to when you have a fight in the in the in the schoolyard, there's two people that participated and there's typically two people that were that were wrong. And so yeah, we shouldn't have had a strip search of the kids and it really shouldn't have gotten that far. So that's about all I have to say.
Laura, if you could please respond.
Sure. No, absolutely not. This never should have happened. And I I the first thing I thought of was who is the superintendent's team and why were they not comfortable saying, no, this is not a good idea? You need to have a team around you, surround yourself as leadership that are going to have people that you can bounce ideas off of. There's not much more to say about this. It shouldn't have happened the way it happened. It was the parents were not involved and it's just there was there's, as Brian said, it was illegal. I think it's going to continue to come out more about it, but absolutely not. And you need a strong team of administrators and a leader that people are going to be comfortable maybe saying, hey, let's rethink this. And somebody that's not going to go off on their own with something that's that's so critical. And so I think it was a terrible thing that happened.
Thank you. James Lyerly, if you'd please respond to the question.
Well, I'll go ahead and make it unanimous. I too think it was a horrible decision. The state compels us to send our kids to school. And for that, we expect that our kids should be able to trust those that are there to take care of them. And that trust in that school district is damaged and it's going to be very difficult to recover. And we should make sure as we put together a board and we have a relationship with administration that that does not happen in Green Bay.
Thank you. Our fifth question, we will start with you, Paul. And the question is, the Green Bay school system has a diverse student population. Oh, Jason, did I, I think I know, I think we're we're okay with the questions, yes. The fifth question is, the Green Bay school system has a diverse student population. What are your perceptions of the needs related to diversity? And if you could please give us an idea or two how to best address those needs?
Okay. The graduation rate is is lower among some communities and part of the reason is they don't see a bridge to the future in certain areas. Like they don't see their friends going to college. When you go to college, you need to find roommates, you have a community of people, and they don't see their friends going to college and they need to see themselves at the college. They need to know what it's about and how I can help them. If you can't think of a good reason to go to college, you need to get an education. So we really need to help them identify how the benefits. Employment rates are lower among a lot of minority communities. And if they're not going to get a job, they might as well be in school. So we need to focus on letting them see that the opportunities and a lot of times they don't have friends who are in college. If you if you can meet people who are in college, you can see that that's the direction you should go. Things like study abroad programs and all the opportunities the college have to offer. So we just need to basically communicate better with the minority students. And in the schools, we should have things like murals and maybe clubs for minorities. And a lot of the colleges have multicultural centers where diverse students can get together. They feel less oppressed by the majority community, although some of the schools now are majority Hispanic. So but we need to really go out there and and communicate and find out what their needs are. And when students drop out, we should have exit surveys to find out why they dropped out and know what they're doing and why they're doing it. Because we keep asking one white person, ask another white person.
Okay, thank you. Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond.
Oh, yes, I know. There there is a lot of diversity in the Green Bay area public schools. And I think one of the the biggest things is we should be treating all children, kids, students, the same. And we should be teaching them that no matter what color your skin is or where you came from, that, you know, we're all Americans and we're all very smart. And I I think the worst thing we can do is start segregating kids into what what skin color they are, what religion they are, you know, where they came from and just try try to explain to them that, you know, we're all, like I said, all Americans and we can all learn. And the the this policy of of saying, well, your your skin color is darker and and you can't go to school or or you're not smart, I think is crazy. So I guess if I was on the board, I would try to try to stop the the segregating people by by their race and nationality and all this other stuff. That's it.
Thank you. Laura Lightnin Warren, if you'd please respond.
Could you please repeat the question?
Certainly. The Green Bay school system has a diverse student population. What are your perceptions of the needs related to diversity? And if you could offer an idea or two to best address those needs?
Sure, we absolutely have a very diverse population. I think to sort of go the other direction of what Jason was saying is that we absolutely need to have all children, all kids be able to bring their entire identity to school. And for my dissertation, I am I'm looking at multiracial leaders. The the largest population growth we have are are people that are multiracial, like myself, like my children, like a huge majority of the population boom. And part of that is is the affinity that you have with others. Me being Oneida, I like to be able to have those others that identify with the same, the same heritage. I'm Finnish. You know, my dad is very proud of his Finnish culture. And those are things that they don't separate you. There's something that that add to what you bring to the community. And I think that people feeling comfortable to be who they are represent everything that is a part of them at school. As long as it doesn't infringe on the rights of of others, that I think that's a good thing. We need to have safe schools for the LGBTQIA community, students of color, students from different economic backgrounds. It needs to be a welcoming place where they can be their their full person. And and the beauty of that is that we all are have something unique that we bring to it and that it should not all be cast under the melting pot, you know, that that saying, I think we need to be the quilt of all of the different patches and and everything that makes us great.
Thank you. James Lyerly, if you'd please respond.
Sure. Um, yeah, I I agree. I think Jason referred to us as all being American. And we have to recognize that America is a melting pot and America itself is very diverse. And we need to celebrate that diversity. If we don't celebrate and build upon that, we will continually fight it. And for the sake of the community, we really do need to create an inclusive school system. And as for an idea, my number one priority being making sure that we are staffed appropriately with teachers. Those teachers should look like that our population. We really should go out and attract teachers that are as diverse as our population.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please respond.
Thank you. I think that there's several key areas that the school board has direct responsibility with. I believe in setting policies similar to what James said of making sure that we can recruit and retain retain employees that reflect the diversity of our district. And we need to make sure we're doing that both on a local level, you know, within the state, but also nationally where we're targeting colleges that have the population of students that's reflecting our student population. And not only for in education, in the teaching roles, but also support staff, office staff, making sure that we recruit and retrain employees that match this. We also need to make sure that we have board policies that welcome all students and recognize their story. There is, there's a lot of school boards that are being challenged on issues that are are flashpoints and they they're they're not really the issues that are taking place. We need to recognize all students' stories and we need to teach them and make sure that students feel welcome in our buildings. And that's that's not just a a race issue, it's a gender issue, it's an identity issue, and making sure that students feel safe and welcome. And we also need to make sure that families feel safe and welcome by encouraging them into the building. It might not be have been the most positive experience. We want to make sure that students and staff and family are feel welcome and safe in our buildings. I've mentioned it last year when I ran, I mentioned it again this year. The community school model takes a key part of that and making sure that they're recognized in the community that we have. So there's also other policies that we can look at as far as, you know, special education identification, utilizing 504 plans as opposed to IEPs, making sure they're welcome and recognizing the challenges that we've had before. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question comes from our students at the Boys and Girls Club and we'll start with you, Jason. Can we ease the restriction on backpacks in school? And why can't we wear hats? We can't hide anything under them. And why can't we wear hoods?
That is just about laughable. So it's kind of funny. I I I have a friend who is a teacher and one of the things that she said is these kids, they put their hoods up and they have earbuds in and you can't see them. And so they're sitting there listening to the radio, listening to something else, listening to their music. I went to school, I went all the way through high school, uh, grade school, junior high and high school and college. And I didn't wear a hoodie and put my hood over my head. I learned just fine. When I was talking to some of these teachers, that was their biggest concern is that the the kids have things underneath their hoods and they're hiding things under there. And so to me, if that's what's going to be happening, we don't need to wear hoods or hats. And that's that's my explanation on it.
Thank you. Laura, would you please respond to the question?
Absolutely. We had this discussion recently on the Policy and Governance Committee and also did go back to the larger Board of Education and we did make some revisions to the dress code policy. I think that hoods are hoods are allowed. And I think that in certain headwear is also allowed, such as durags and and scarves. I think that there's, you know, we don't, I don't think as as the board you know, we don't, I don't think as, as the board, I've said, we don't want to treat, treat teachers like every one of them is, is the lowest performing teacher. I think we don't need to treat students like they're the lowest performing student or the student who is going to put earbuds in and not pay attention. Some students feel comfortable that way. Some people, students may not have been able to get a haircut. With, I have a daughter with very curly hair and, and she fortunately were able to take care of it every morning. But when she's older, maybe she's going to want to wear up on it to school sometime. Doesn't mean that they're not, she's not engaged. It doesn't mean the students are engaged. There's always going to be some students that are going to put their earbuds in. But I don't, I don't think we should treat all students as if they're not going to pay attention. I've heard support from teachers and principals on the change and I've heard from a couple of teachers that were not happy with it because it's, it's challenges what we think is respectful, I think historically. But I've kind of come around to change my point of view on that and that it's really about the child, their learning and it's not meant to be disrespectful in most cases and we need to treat them that way.
Thank you. James Lyerly, if you'd please respond.
So the bald guy who went to a military college is going to agree with Laura and say that, you know, in my career, I have seen very little connection between what a person is wearing and what they are doing and the value they are adding to our organization. And where we can extend some ability to have a personality and to be themselves. I think I applaud the, the school board for taking the decision to relax that school board, that, that policy and allow certain head, headgear and, and hoods. So the more flexible we can be and allow people to demonstrate or express themselves, I think that's the way I would, I would go.
Sorry, Brian, would you please respond?
Absolutely. As an educator, I've, I've had, I've seen both sides of this. I've told hundreds or asked hundreds of students to take off their hoods or take off their hat. Part of it was initially a, a building security issue, you know, cameras being able to identify faces with students and stuff like that. And I've, I, I've recognized there's, that's not necessarily the, the fight or the, the, the battle you want to fight as far as issues in schools. I'm a firm believer that an issue like that should be set by a student and the teacher in the classroom or at a building level. And the amount of energy on it should be minimal. If a student's being engaged in class and is respectful and if they're, you know, participating in class, that's, that's our number one issue. There's, there are students I have now that they wear earbuds or AirPods in class and I tell them, I just give them the, the, the finger wiggle. And because we have the connection with it, they'll, they'll take those AirPods out. There's, I've taught in schools that have not allowed hoodies to, you know, very loosely enforced dress code policies. The secret is you just make connections with those kids and it, it will work. You'll be able to address that issue. That's my opinion on it. Thank you.
Paul, Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond.
Yeah, if the teachers and students can communicate and find some way that they can respect each other, it shouldn't be too much of a problem. As far as backpacks, until we can create an environment that's, that's safer and it's, we have to get students on board. We're not on board with what's going on. It's too much hostility. We have to change the environment, the lunch environment. We have to change the, the bus environment, the hallway environment. You know, get music, maybe have TV during lunch hour, get people in a teamwork, community spirit. So that there's not so much hostility and then we won't have to worry about backpacks or weapons or any of those issues. And you have to respect the person you're talking to. So when, when they are having difficulty communicating with you because they feel like you're not on the same page, that's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, question number six, we'll start with you, Laura. It appears that COVID, the COVID nineteen pandemic is winding down. Do you feel that all teachers and staff should be fully vaccinated? Why or why not?
Oh, wow. Um, we're winding down. I think that we need teachers, we need quality teachers. I think I've, I support vaccinations, but I think that in the need of the district and needing teachers, that we have some flexibility in that right now. I'm a huge advocate for vaccines. I'll put it, and I think that had we had an overabundance of teachers and that that was the best thing at the time to, to promote vaccines, that's what we did. And I, gosh, this is a tough one. I, I really think that it has to be up to the teachers at this point. I'm just thankful that the people that did get vaccines have helped slow the spread and have done their part. We need all the teachers we can get. So I, I just hope that we can continue to be as safe as possible. And the other mitigation procedures that we put in place that those did help. But I think with the district, with the shortage of teachers that we had, that wasn't something that we could do. And I, I don't think like right now that that would be the best option to, to require that. And unfortunately, we're moving in the right direction with the, with the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. James Lyerly, if you'd please respond.
Like Laura, I'm pro vaccination. And but when it comes to enforcing a vaccination on others, in response to the pandemic, vaccination was one of a couple of tools that would help the population, the community combat the, the pandemic. So the board's relationship with, between enforcing a mandate and, and personal freedoms, that has to be sensitive to the environment, right? And the student is right, I think it was a student question, that the pandemic is now endemic and we have it going in the right direction. And so personal freedom and someone's ability to choose what they do with their body, I think wins the day for me at this point.
Thank you, Brian, if you'd please respond.
I, I agree. I'm, I'm probably vaccinated. I was happy to get it right away. I think vaccination is a work. I believe in science. I think that the district has a responsibility to set policies that allow individual freedom, but also incentivize things that help the district run. So for instance, the district was a leader as far as leave policy. If someone was sick and it was diagnosed with COVID, that they would, the, the days that were there, I think if you choose not to and you, you get sick, you need to, let me rephrase that, you want to make sure that you're incentivizing the ability for the district to run with it as far as with employees on there. So we had mitigation strategies that were in place as far as masks and making sure virtual learning took place and all these other options. So to answer your question, I don't think the district should mandate vaccines, but they should encourage it in any ways possible.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond.
I would strongly encourage vaccines. If a teacher doesn't want a vaccine, they should be able to explain in a logical, rational manner why they don't want the vaccine. Because if, if a teacher doesn't believe in logic and she doesn't believe, or he doesn't believe in science, that's a problem. So that's something that, that each, each addressed by each individual, but I definitely strongly encourage vaccines.
Thank you. James, Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond. You're muted. Jason, you're muted.
I was just asking you if you could please repeat the question because there was.
Oh, yes. It appears that the COVID nineteen pandemic is winding down. How do you, do you feel that all teachers and staff should be fully vaccinated? Why or why not?
To, to me, that is a, that is something that should be between you and your doctor. It, the board should not be telling the teacher whether they should or shouldn't be getting a vaccine. That is, that is a medical decision between them and their doctor. That's, that's it.
Thank you. We are on question number eight. And the question is, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board? I will start with you, James.
So I, in my work, I've been traveling a lot, right? And it was COVID that relaxed that travel schedule and gave me an opportunity to do what I have wanted to do for a long time. And that's get involved in the, the local community. I, in searching for opportunities, read and researched the vision, the mission and the strategic roadmap of, of the school district. And I believe in them. I support them. And when I'm looking for opportunities to serve, that's criteria number one. I have to believe in the mission of that organization. I was a teacher as my first job and I looked at this as a way I think I can serve that fits my abilities and, and will allow me to, to give back to the community.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please respond.
I believe in great public schools and I believe that all of our children need to attend them. And I think as a board member, we need to give the best policies to support those schools. I, I've spent my whole career in education. I understand public education. I understand school funding. I understand the, the weeds of how schools work. And I think that my expertise in that area will help us set policy and provide the resources necessary to have great public schools for every kid, regardless of what zip code they live in. And I believe in the Green Bay Public Schools. I've, my family continues to attend the schools. My wife works for one of the schools in the district. And I continue to engage and participate with the school district. And even though I've switched districts with it through officiating and, and providing opportunities for kids outside of sports and running chess tournaments and things like that. And I believe in public schools and I believe our children deserve the best schools we have. And as a school member, excuse me, as a school board member, I'm going to fight to provide that.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond.
Well, I see a myriad of problems in our community and the way to solve that is the problem is through education. I see things like racism is a form of ignorance, sexism is a form of ignorance. People don't know exactly what, some people don't know exactly what fraud is. We have a, this high school to, to prison system that we, we can't figure out a way to solve. There's just so many sociological problems we have as far as people don't know whether masks worked or not. It's just, the, the problems go on and on. And I think in order to solve these problems, we have to really focus on education. So I have a lot of ideas to address these issues. And I, I think being a school board member, I could really make a difference. And that's what I want to do.
Thank you. Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond.
Yeah, so the reason why is because I, I'm concerned about our schools and I'm concerned about our, our, my, my neighbors leaving and my friends leaving the school district. And you look at why they're doing it and, and they'll, they'll tell you, they'll tell you that they don't appreciate the, the environment in, in the school. And I also talked to several teachers that left the Green Bay area of public schools and they told me the same thing, the environment in the school. Kids don't respect the teachers. The administration wasn't helping the teachers or isn't backing the teachers up in some instances. And so I, I thought, you know what, I'm going to try to help these people out. I've worked in, in, in general industry for twenty-two years and I brought a lot of people together. I've done a lot of different types of work. And I, I look at my background and my skills and I, I think I can really help the Green Bay area of public schools become a better place to go to school, get an education and for people to work. And if we can make it a better environment in the school, I think we'll have better retention of teachers and students and we should hopefully increase our, our learning or our school grade, report card grade that we've gotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lightman Warren, if you'd please respond.
Sure. There isn't one reason. It's, it's actually a multitude of reasons. Initially, it, when I applied for the appointment, when Christina Shelton left the school board, it was because I had the time. I was, I took some time off from my career to be home with my kids while they're doing school virtually. And I've always been passionate about education. As I mentioned, I've been involved with my kids' school in the district since they started. So that was the initial thing, but since I've been here, I'm finding it's the perfect opportunity to utilize my, my education, my experience, my passion for organizations, employees and employee engagement, as well as being a mom is, is probably the number one reason and having kids that have a long career yet in the school district. And loving the experience that they've had with their school, with the school community, with the culture that was created at their school and the people I've met. And I think it's, it's all of that coming together. That's creating the reason that I'm, I'm running and, and continue to serve. And also just being a student of, of leadership, I, I firmly believe in being a servant leader. And this is, this is the best way to do that for the community and give back for, and for, for the students and to make things better for the future for them.
Thank you. Our next question and we'll start with you, Brian. What is your opinion on the need for another referendum? Is a referendum needed and what would the referendum be used for?
We, we need a referendum. We need to make sure that we are making our buildings as competitive with outlying districts. We need to make sure that the upkeep and the maintenance, the facilities updating is taking place. So we don't have to pay for it farther down the line. We also need to make sure that we're funding positions to keep class sizes low and make sure that we have support staff in place for students outside of just educating, outside of classroom teachers, including lowering special education caseloads, making sure that we have school psychologists and social workers and school nurses and the other support services there to help our students. Could you repeat the question, Jean? I'm sorry.
Yes. What is your opinion on the need for another referendum? Is it needed and what would the referendum be used for?
It would, I would believe we would need it for facilities updates. We need to look at expanding some schools and, and programs in other schools with it as well. We also need to address the fact that there's a funding shortage from the state. We have a deficit or I'm sorry, we have a surplus of the state and the funding hasn't kept up as promised with both a state and federal level as far as special education funding. And we need to recruit teachers and teachers are going to work for several different reasons and staff are going to stay based on respect, feeling welcome, problem solving and, and financial incentives for it. So we, funding, referendum shouldn't have to take place. We have a major issue with the school funding program. But that is our avenue to increase funding for the school district at this point. So as a board, that's one of the things we can address. As a board member, I'd work with state legislators to improve the school funding formula.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond to the question.
As I said earlier, we need money for schools. Now you can, you can, you can use a referendum, that's one way. A tax on things like marijuana that, that would bring a lot of revenue. Also investing in real estate around where we're going to build schools. Because as we build the schools, we can build the community around them and subdivide the land and, and, and make, make money on the land. So we need money from somewhere. I'd prefer not to get it from taxpayers. I would prefer the schools to pay for it for themselves. And these are creative solutions that, that a lot of schools haven't even thought of, but I'm throwing it out there to see if anybody will take a swing at it.
Thank you. James Johnson, if you, Jason Johnson, if you'd please respond.
Uh, yes. Well, I believe we're going to be having a referendum in the next year or so. And I think our referendum dollars should be going to providing some general maintenance of our schools and make sure that our schools are in, 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 you know, good working order, that the, the doors work. And, and you kind of laugh at it, will do the doors work. Well, I, I know maintenance people that work at the schools and they're like, there's some doors that don't even work and these are egress doors. That's important. That's safety. So we really need to go through and make sure that our buildings are safe and they're watertight. I also think we need to provide some dollars for some technology upgrades. I know teachers that still are using chalkboards. They're not using the technology in their classrooms that they could be. We also need to provide some funding, I think, for our athletics and our extracurricular activities. I know that some of those extracurricular activities and athletic departments needs, you know, New Jerseys, they need, you know, some lighting and that types of things for, for different, different aspects of, of their extracurricular activities. So I think that's where we need to take a look at next.
Thank you. Laura Lightman Warren, if you'd please respond.
Sure, I, I agree. I know we're going to need, we'll have a referendum, I'm sure, coming in the near future. And it is something, the, the money and the investment in our schools is, is always a positive. It always, it needs to happen to continue our growth and to continue to provide what we need for our families and the community. I think all of the things that were already identified, we need to have safe schools. I know one of the and in the last referendum, some of those schools had like special doors put in security to keep them the buildings more secure. I think all of those things are important. And the more money that we can have going towards public education. You know, I I think it's, you know, it's a challenge because people don't want to increase their taxes. It's it's a burden already on people. But I am, that's just the best thing we can do to improve the schools. And and if we're going to have to have a referendum to go forward and and get the schools what they need, all the things that were identified, I'm I'm in full support of that. And we'll do what I can to help get that through.
Okay, thank you. James Lierley, if you'd please respond.
I'm sorry, I do believe that there's going to be a referendum. So I agree. I think that this is one area where the board plays a significant role, right? If we're going to ask for money from our community, we should be held to account for that spend and make sure that we are absolutely fiscally responsible, especially in this current environment, right? So when we look at that spending program, we need to prioritize those dollars that through capital investment will reduce operational budget, right? And make sure that it's not a one thing. We add a facility, we build a new stadium or something like that. And then we continue to have the problems that we have with our ongoing operational budget. So when we talk about things like that, identifying ways where you can get to carbon neutral buildings, pay back energy costs to the the grid, their school districts have done that successfully. And I think they provide a model forward for that spend.
Thank you. I'd like to take the time and ask one last question that comes from our students at the Boys and Girls Club. And we'll start with you, Paul. And that is, do you have any ideas for improving the food offer to students?
I have a bunch of ideas. You know how when you go to Sam's Club, they have samples and you could try different foods. Weight Watchers says you can eat as many fruits and fresh fruits and vegetables as you want. It's not going to hurt to affect your weight. Special food programs for athletes. Have a cooking class. I go to the the farmer's market on Saturdays. And sometimes when they have the indoor one, they have a cooking class in the corner of the room. So people can go watch and learn how to cook. Anybody who's going to college should know how to cook ramen noodles. There's a lot of foods that people have never tried. I never tried a pie up till I was in my thirties. They kids should learn about what's out there when they're young. And I've got this infinite number of ideas just to make lunch more fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, would you please respond?
Yeah, that's a funny thing because my kids take their their lunch to school because they're telling me how disgusting it is. And that's a and that's a sad fact because if you go to some of these grade schools and and middle schools, they're throwing away almost more food than they're eating. And and that's sad because these are meals that we're paying for. So we probably should make the administration eat the same meals that the kids are. So at the grade school, the principal eats that same lunch. And I I think after a while, they'll they'll decide that they should do something about it. I know other schools, they actually outsource their 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 food service. And I know teachers that say that their food is actually really good and they eat at at their schools. So there's some things we can do about it. And I think the first thing is you have the administration eating what the kids are eating. And then then I think things will start straightening up. And the school board too, the school board members should be going there and having lunch every once in a while too to check it out. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lightnin Warren, if you'd please respond.
Yes, prior to being on the school board, I did go have lunch with my kids. And I did eat. I did eat the school lunch. They had a really good salad bar. And it was not, the school pizza has changed since I was in school and the school pizza used to be really good, but now it's it's not as wonderful. It's like these little pucks. But at any rate, there are so many creative things we can do. And I I am the United Nations School System does some great things, the you know, with food sovereignty, sustainability. They have traditional foods. I think we talk about the diversity within the district. I know we have so many kids, but are there things we can do to bring in food from from different cultures? The my husband's a teacher and he'll bring home one night of corn soup. You know, there's things like that. Granted, there's a lot smaller population. But there's creative things we can do, aquaponics, things that the, you know, can the students plant things and then use the gardens in the in some of the meals. There's a whole host of things that we can do. And school lunch has never been the best, as long as I can ever recall in terms of gourmet food. But sure, we can improve. But I think that we have a lot of opportunity in in other areas as well. But there's a lot of creativity and we can ask the kids, ask the parents and come up with some ideas. And and we, of course, it's all going to cost cost money, but we can get creative and and maybe there's other things that we can partner, other organizations we can partner with in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. James Lierley, if you'd please respond.
So Laura, I would go as far as saying I thought it was a rite of passage to actually have to endure elementary school lunches. But 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 I agree that they are always meeting basically the the minimum standards for the nutritional value that the the such is required, right? And it's a it's it's a complex problem, right? Because you're right, it's expensive to bring in and change that that nutritional component without really increasing the budget, right? And so I I I would call for an evaluation of those partnerships and or and see if there are other opportunities to augment the the food services that we have.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please respond.
It was a perfect timing. My daughter was just walking down and I always see the leftovers from school as well with it. There's a couple of key issues with this. Obviously, the school lunch programs are federally mandated programs, so we have to meet nutritional guidelines with that. But we have great opportunities within the school district with programs that we could look at it as a building by building level and working to make sure that those programs are equitable and meeting the needs of the schools and the different populations there. For example, Preble has an excellent food science program and work with the students to figure out how we can solve it and meet the needs of the district. The other great thing that's been happening is schools have been able to offer free lunch and free breakfast. And that's allowed all students to come in and eat regardless of whether previously they've received free lunch or a reduced luncheon, kind of taking the stigma away from it. I've I've witnessed it firsthand where our numbers have gone up considerably for students to come in and get that meal. Obviously, there's shortages going on, supply chain issues that are hitting school lunches and and the FDA programs. And to be honest, I don't see them improving in the near future, but working within other programs that do this and and just improving the general part of it, but also making sure that the schools continue the program that Christina Shelton is advocating for at a state level to keep that free lunch and free breakfast available for our students. And then keep working to improve it. Just like was mentioned, we've got great partners at UWGB and St. Norbert that have excellent dining facilities. See if they'll come in and give us some pointers on it as well. But with it being a federal program, our hands are kind of side with it. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our questions. And so now it's time for each board candidate to offer their two minute closing statement. And we'll start with you, Jason Johnson.
There we go. Now I'm unmuted. Yeah, I've elected to the school board. I guess one of my main qualities that I bring to the board is that I've got a background that's from outside of the education system. However, my my mother, my wife, my mother-in-law, they're all teachers. I have friends and neighbors that are teachers. So I do have a a point of view or I I get a point of view, whether I like it or not, on a daily basis. And so I I think that would would be one of one of the benefits. You know, my wife and I agree that, you know, education doesn't stop in the classroom, but it's it it also is at home. And, you know, if on the board, that'd be one of the things I'd like to bring is is really stress to some of the the parents that, you know, education doesn't stop at the classroom and that it 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 continues on in in the house. And it that's, you know, we're partners into that. And, you know, with that in mind, we'd we'd like to encourage our children to explore activities inside school and and outside school and also explore the activities that the schools provide. You know, I'd like to really push, you know, interests such as music and theater and sports. And, you know, the technical school aspect of of what Green Bay area public schools has to offer some of these kids. Because, you know, it's evident as parents and educators that we must ensure our students have a fundamentally sound reading and writing and math and and science skills so that they have a well-rounded education because a well-rounded education is a key to becoming a success a successful adult. It'll help you in your career. And it just kind of gives you a a place to be in society and and become a a better citizen. And that's kind of what I'd like to do.
Thank you. Laura Lightnin Warren, if you'd please offer your two minute closing statement.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you again for hosting this forum. I'm I'm glad to be here with four of the other candidates. I think that this is such an important time to get together related to education. And I I want to encourage everybody that is watching to make sure that they vote for three candidates. We have three spots available. Three people are going to serve. And I hope that everybody will take the time to vote and vote for the three people that they'd like to see on the school board in April. I have learned in the past year as an appointed member of the board that I like the work. I can positively contribute to the community through service in this capacity. My background, experience, education and my perspective are strengths that I bring to the district. And I have met so many amazing people in the community on the board and just everybody that cares about kids and cares about public education. And they're dedicated to making it a better place. And I I really appreciate that. If I could deserve, I'll continue to listen, to reach out to all the communities and especially the underrepresented communities. I will use my network to further build relationships and and bring new voices to Gbats. I'm committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and and that means all students and creating a community where they and their families are welcome. And I hope that that everybody will consider casting their vote for me come April fifth. And thank you for listening and being here and hosting this to the League Women Voters.
Thank you. James Lierley, if you'd please offer your closing statement.
Well, yes. Thank you for hosting this this event tonight. It's very important. I really appreciated participating and hearing from the other candidates. And for everyone that submitted a question, thank you for participating. And if you're here listening, thank you as well. So it's an important decision to elect the board. And what the impact we will have on the future of this community is 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 great. I want to take the opportunity to first thank those who come before. This board has been in existence and there have been many, many dedicated persons that have contributed to their time and energy to make the Green Bay Public Schools what they are today. And personally, I think there's much more good than there are problems in this school system. There's a lot to celebrate. And I believe in the mission. I have a collection of experiences where I think I can make a positive impact, be a constructive board member and build consensus and and with the other six members to make a positive impact on their school system and drive this community forward. So I'm asking for your vote. You can find me on Facebook, James Lierley for Green Bay Public School Board. Find out more about me. So I appreciate the time and look forward to April fifth so we can figure out what the future looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Mills, if you'd please offer your closing statement.
Thank you. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the event tonight. All the community members that are watching and and the five candidates that are participating to share our ideas. I hope that my experiences and commitment to the students, family members and staff, the Green Bay Area Public School District are clear. I'd like for everyone that's interested to visit my campaign website, it's votemills.org with a Z. And our Facebook page, which is facebook.com backslash votemills. You can also reach me at brian@votemills.org with a Y. Vice President Cheney once said that from kindergarten to graduation, I went to public schools. And I know that they are the key to being sure that every child has a chance to succeed and rise in the world. I'm running for school board because I believe that the Green Bay Area Public School District is doing great things to help our children rise in the world and that we're working really hard to make sure that they're successful in pursuing their career and building our community after that. We've done great things as far as the high schools and middle schools, providing opportunities through our career and technical education, our music programs, BayLink Manufacturing Partnership, our the automotive program at Green Bay East, the music program through the East Quadrant. And throughout the district, we have some fantastic things that we need to make sure we're advertising and promoting. I also realize our district's facing some serious challenges. And I think that my experience and knowledge in education and the education field will help us. We have a $220 million budget and we have over 20,000 or 19,000 students in the district that we need to make sure we have knowledge and experience on the board to help form those policies for the students to be successful and for our staff to have a safe teaching environment as well. I'm thrilled that my wife and children are active in the Green Bay School District. I continue to be active in the school district through various activities, including chess tournaments and football game, officiating, other areas I've talked about before. I'm also proud of the fact that there's been five groups that have held endorsement process and vetting processes. And I've been endorsed by all five of those groups. Proud of the support I've received from educators and community members and families that are out here. I hope that you'll support my campaign and vote. You can start voting early and hopefully we'll find out in April that we still have a good plan moving forward for the Green Bay School District. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you please respond to the your two minute closing statement.
Well, I believe that we're finding out more than ever that schools are more about socialization than they are education. Kids go to school because it's cool. We need to develop things like our football programs have really been failing. We really need to work on those to to get people to believe in the schools. It's it's a symptomatic problem when you have football teams that can't win win a game or score points. I'd like to have a sort of a high school hangout after school where you can have open mic for for singers, comedians, musicians, DJs. So kids have a place to socialize after school and and build a sense of community. And I also like to get get the community into the schools, find events, potlucks, raffles, whatever you can to get the community teachers and parents, get people on the same page. And I also don't like the philosophy. I don't think students like the philosophy that that the parents and the adults are in charge. I think you have to give the the kids a sense of agency that they have just the equal say in their education. And when they believe that, we will succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay, I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to our candidates, Paul Boucher, Jason Johnson, Laura Lightnin Warren, James Lierley and Brian Mills for participating in this virtual forum and sharing your positions and perspectives. And thank you to our audience participating virtually and for submitting your thoughtful questions. We'd like to extend a sincere appreciation to League Board Member Karen Schley for coordinating this forum and League Member Steve Harrell for the technical work to set up and record the forum, Jill Ferminick for serving as our timekeeper and Jane Benson for reviewing the questions. As a reminder, this recording is available on the League of Women Voters Greater Green Bay Facebook page and website. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Early in-person voting starts on Tuesday, March 22nd. This ends the League of Women Voters School Board Forum brought to you by the League Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. Have a wonderful evening and good night.